We welcome everyone to this December 5, 2022, meeting of the Corsicana ISD Board of Trustees. This is a regular meeting, and all items that have been discussed have been duly posted. While this is a meeting in public, it's not a meeting of the public. If you wish to speak, please register in the lobby on the audience for guest form and follow the information on the speaker form. The board's role is to set goals, approve personnel and budgets, make policy, and provide oversight. We are not here to manage or solve individual problems. Management is a responsibility of the superintendent. As a board, we believe that we must educate every child, provide every child the greatest opportunity to learn, and maintain a safe and secure environment mentally, physically, emotionally, and academically. These are our core values. We appreciate your interest in the Children of CISD. All right. We're going to ask Navarro Elementary, we've got several members, so Skylar Carter, Rayleigh Buchanan, Mason Weaver, Skylar Claiborne, Asher Prickett, Brody Jackson, Lauren Yoast, Malachi Grigsby, and Taylor Dvorak to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can y'all turn around? You can turn around this way where the flags are. There you go. Thank you.
I'm going to follow your lead.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
And then stay up here for a picture. Oh, we're going to go there.
Hey, thank you.
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 So go right now.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Are we going?
Let's do this first.
Yep. We thought that was the best.
Yeah.
I haven't even touched stuff in the garage. Where are the storage units at?
My Zonda.
Probably won't talk to Christmas.
Greatest singer of all time.
Thank you.
All right. We'd ask Raj Kripalani from Northside Baptist, please do our invocation.
Dear God, our help, our refuge, our protector and shield, thank you for this meeting. Thank you for this board, their sacrifice, their time, their service to the community. We pray, please bless this meeting. Please guide it, direct it, give it your vision. Thank you. In your son's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Now, we're moving into the first report, public hearing. Is anybody signed up to speak? Is anybody signed up to speak, Meryl? Thank you.
You return that one, and then you go into audience for guests.
A review of school first.
Thank you all for letting me speak to you tonight. Happy to report that Corsicana ISD has once again received an A in this year's first report evaluation. The score is used 2020, 2021 data, and has 20 testing areas they look at every year. Some of those areas are worth 10, some are worth five, and some are just pass fail with no points. We have remained the same scores last year with a 92 out of 100, and out of 18 out of the 20 areas, we have received a perfect score. The other two areas, we received 12 out of 20, and looking closer into those two areas, I think it's very comforting to say that we will improve both of those next year, and will most likely receive a two- to four-point increase and possibly a 96 out of 100 score. That's all I have.
We're going to adjourn that. And thank you, Brian, for doing that. We're going to adjourn the first report hearing, and we're going to move into audience for guests. Is there any audience for guests for this? No? All right. So we're going to move into the superintendent's report.
We had on Saturday a first Corsicana Christmas, which is a celebration of the Christmas season as well as the 175th birthday for the city of Corsicana. Our choruses from our campuses performed, and they were wonderful. They were at the Palace, so I want to thank Ms. Blackard and the Palace staff, I know Mr. Walthall was there as well, for assisting with that. We also want to commend Dr. Howard. It was one of her, as a new employee of the district, was one of her first public events, and it was very successful. I was very, very proud of our students and our very talented teachers. They were great, and it was a very festive occasion and really got you into the holiday spirit. I don't know if I could have worn this sweater today if I had not experienced that concert on Saturday. Our Christmas parade float was also very successful. Abby Van Lukey, our administrative assistant in technology, and works with Ms. Howell, and so she designed our float, and it was beautiful. It was, I couldn't believe it when it drove up. It was absolutely amazing. I was also kind of amazed as our board members walked up dressed as the characters from Whoville. We had The Grinch, we had Whoville citizens, we had Cindy Lou Who, we had the mayor, and of course, Mr. and Ms. Claus. And of course, the Corsicana Tiger was present as well. We won first place from the competition in the parade, so we want to thank Abby for that. She did a wonderful job. And now, it is both my pleasure and my honor to ask Kiara Johnson to come forward. She designed the Corsicana ISD Christmas card for this year. She's a very, very talented artist, as you can see, and these are going out all over the city and across the state to a lot of different friends. So we have a prize for you, and we want to thank you for this.
Yeah, she's another one of those great Johnson kids. That's right.
She's the last of the ones.
Maybe you need some more, Tiffany.
So now, we're going to move into the demographic report from Zonda Demographics.
I'm going to ask Mr. Hudson Huff to come up. He has, he and his company have done a great deal of work in looking at this demographic projection, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Brown, and members of the board, and Dr. Frost. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight on the most festivus of board meeting nights that I've been to yet, so thank you for that. It's awesome. Absolutely great. So I'll get into it here in the report, just to highlight, we speak specific to kind of the conditions that are happening in the housing market, and then we get a little bit more into the details of what's happening specific within the district itself, as well as what's happening with the enrollment. So with that said, the job market definitely plays a big factor into what happens in our housing market, and so we know that we had a spike during the pandemic, but it has been a very healthy job market over the last several years. And so you can see the unemployment rate in the state of Texas was at 4.8 last year and actually dropped down to about 3.8, and specifically to the Navarro County is actually very much in alignment with that, and was at 4.3%. And this year, in October, dropped down to about 3.5%. So very, very strong. In response to that, we've seen that regionally, that the housing market and the builders started to build quite a few starts. And so that really took off in the, in that first quarter, or by the time you get to that third quarter of 2021. But you can see in what I'm about to highlight related to what we dealt with, related to inflation and the interest rates, that has dropped off. So you can actually see that from that third quarter of '21 down to the third quarter of '22, that those starts have started to come down, and it's partly tied to the interest rates that we've been dealing with. So you can see, the Federal Reserve went through a series of interest rate hikes, and so that started to take place as of March of 2022. So home mortgage rates were at about 3.5% in that early springtime, and on a home that was about $210,000, that monthly house payment would have been about $1,165. And then, over that six-month period of time with the interest rate increases that took place, took place in March, in May, June, July, into September, and we even had an interest rate hike in November that increased those above that 7%, and that increased those monthly payments significantly, which is, from talking to the home builders, that's the thing that people evaluate, is what their monthly payments are going to be. So we know that has caused an impact to people's evaluation on what they can buy, and so that has slowed things down as we've gotten into the fall. Oops, sorry. I apologize. Didn't mean to. Make sure that I've got that back. If you don't mind, go to the next one there. So we do see that we do have job creation taking place, and so there was announcement of the Riot Blockchain Company that is anticipated to open up the largest Bitcoin mining warehouse in North America, and so that is anticipated to bring approximately about 270 new jobs to the area, as well as referencing that there would be several more hundred to come in the following years. When you think about the district and its overall population, we've had significant increases, about 2,800 residents over the last 10 to 12 years, and then you can see that there's about 1,000 additional households that have been added since that time. And what we also want to highlight for you is referencing the population of the children and the student age groups in the district, and so that has gone up about 6.1%. You can also see that there have been some ranges for the new homes in the area, and so that has, that has had a significant range as far as the difference between the low end and the high end. But I will say that you have had a significant appreciation in the existing home market, and so if you look at what took place from 2010 to currently, you've got about a 70% increase in those values over that timeframe. When you look at what happened related to home sales, you have had between 2018 to this last year, you had about 600 homes that would average year over year that would sell. And you can see what happened after that second quarter with the increases in the interest rate, that you can see the softening in the housing market. And that is not unique to Corsicana and this area. This is happening in just about every region that we've got in the state and nationally. So it's just a softening of the market based off of where the interest rates currently are. The next one? Oops, sorry. Go back there if you want. We do see that there are four active building subdivisions that are in the district with two futures, and then you also have about 200 lots that are currently being built and developed with utilities and roads, and those are the Corsicana Commons area that's in Navarro, as well as Barefoot Bay that is in the Carroll Elementary Zone. So Corsicana Commons is a mixed-use development, so that is scheduled to have about 166 single-family lots. It has referenced 15, but I actually drove it earlier today, and it's actually closer to 30 homes that are currently under construction right now, so they've been moving at a faster pace than we'd even anticipated. So we also know that they have 13 commercial lots that'll be within that overall development. And then, they also have multifamily that'll be built into that development as well. It'll be a combination of duplexes and townhomes, but based off of what the builders have shared with us, those are in out years, so that's several years to come. They are going to work on the single-family lots first, and then we'll be building those others, other areas of the development later on.
Do you know how many of the commercial lots are sold by the state of California?
There are, right now, in the planning, what they referenced, the planning stage is 13 lots that will be identified for the commercial use, but they didn't specifically state, you know, a timeframe for those. The next area we have is the Barefoot Bay development, and that is 105 total lots, and that is being developed by Lakewood Capital. And we know that they already have utilities and roads that are going in for that development. It is in the Carroll Elementary Zone. It is going to be split related to where the boundaries are between the three school districts. So we don't know, we know about 30% of that development would be within the Corsicana The next development is West Over Hills, and that has a total of 32 lots, eight homes that are currently built with four that are currently under construction, and then we know that there are 20 vacant developed lots that will be, are available to be built on, and that is in the Bowie Elementary Zone. And then, Dobbins Crossing is 18 total lots close to Collins Intermediate, and so that has eight homes that are currently completed, with five homes that are under construction, and five that have vacant developed lots. So right across the street from West Over Hills is a future development called Brookstone, and so Brookstone is, has 30 total lots, and it's currently, I think, under review with the city and with anticipation of construction activity starting this next year. That's okay. No, no, y'all are great. This is great. No, that's okay. The next future development is Northview, and that has 71 futures that are included in that. Phase one through three have been completed, but through discussions with the city, they anticipate that that 70 will be a little further out, potentially in three to five years before those come to fruition. So looking at your multifamily, we know that recently, you built the Cedar Springs apartment complex that opened this past, I think, within the last year, year and a half, that had 148 units. There aren't any current multifamily that are scheduled to be built currently right now, but again, I would refer back to, and what we've identified is the anticipation of what would happen at Corsicana Commons when you look at the town halls, townhomes and duplexes that'll be built, and there'll be several hundred that'll be included as part of that development into the future. So one of the things that we do is we identify the current locations of your students, and so we have 274 students that currently reside outside of the district. Many times over, a certain percentage of that comes from staff students that may come from outside of the district. That consists of about 4.5% of your overall enrollment. Approximately 94% of your overall student enrollment is within the city of Corsicana, We do identify birth rates and make sure that you're aware of where those are, and we've highlighted the fact that we did have a drop in district births in the 2018 year from the 2017 year. And so we only reference this just from the standpoint of making the district aware that there could be a lower kindergarten grade that may come in this coming year just be related to that. We know that there's been growth that takes place between then and now, but it does indicate that there could be a percentage of a lower cohort growth in the kindergarten age group This is identifying your previous five years, and so this will highlight a couple of things. One is to identify your largest grade classes. So in yellow, you'll see your largest grade classes over the last several years, and your green is your second-largest grade class. You'll see, as I go into the next couple of slides, you'll see where there is a point in time in the next couple of years where you'll have a little bit of a drop in your overall enrollment, and that's tied into that large grade, that large, what is currently your 10th grade class will come through and graduate out, and so that following class is just a little smaller than that. So that just ties into, not necessarily related to a drop in overall enrollment growth, but it just is a small drop in that one year. I would also highlight, when you look at your cohorts, you had in the 21-22 year, between, in that second-grade class through your sixth-grade class, you can see that there's a number that's below one, and so those grade levels did have a drop. But if you'll look at that next year and it rolls up into that following third-grade class through the seventh-grade class, all of those numbers came back and have risen up. So whatever drop was in those grade cohorts has come back up and returned. So I would also highlight that your pre-K, your first grade, and your ninth grade areas' grade levels had the strongest cohort growth year over year. So when you look at the overall forecast, if you'll look in the far-right corner, you'll see what is anticipated to be enrollment growth, and so you'll see that increase year over year. And as I highlighted, in that 25-26 year where there is a drop and there is a minus seven that's referenced there, it's just related to that one large graduating class that leaves that previous year. And from then on, we would anticipate that you would continue to have growth beyond This identifies specifically the enrollment that you currently have at each one of the campuses, and then a forecast based off of enrollment, as well as the future potential developments in those various different regions. So as highlighted with Bowie and Navarro, we would anticipate that you would have enrollment growth. You do have a little bit of a drop into next year at those elementary school campuses, but that's because your fourth-grade class is moving on to the intermediate school, so you'll see that your intermediate grades in the next year actually go up a little bit, and your fourth grade, that elementary enrollment number for every one of the elementaries goes down just a little bit, but it's just because of where that fourth-grade class is and how it graduates on to the fifth grade this next year. Ultimately, you'll see that you progress through that same degree of enrollment increases at the various different levels, at the middle and high school, and ultimately, with a 10-year forecast, you'll see that you're going to ultimately be at that far bottom-right corner, about 6,400 is what we're projecting right now based off of current developments. So with all that said, in summer, we have 91 additional students that came into the district this year. We have a drop in overall home sales in the area, but that is very consistent with what we see in other markets, and again, it's due to where we're at with interest rates. And if, talking through the, talking to many of the builders, they anticipate that the interest rate did increase over 7%. When the interest rate did drop this past month below 7%, buyers did start to come back, so they do anticipate that that, if numbers would level off and come down a little bit, that the buyers will come back into the market. So with that said, we do anticipate that we're going to have four active building developments, and Corsicana Commons is extremely busy right now. I can tell you, they are doing a lot of building in that area, and with two futures still coming, and then ultimately, we think there's going to be about 140 students that will be added to the overall enrollment over the next five years, and that you will most likely exceed about 6,400 students when you get about 10 years out, and that's based off of what we know currently today, based off of the developments that are currently proposed. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
As far as the state as a whole, something you do other schools are, are you, do you see an influx of people moving to Texas compared to, say, two, three, or four years ago?
Texas, the population of Texas has continued to grow significantly. You've heard businesses moving into the Texas region for the last several years. I will say that year over year, the DFW Metroplex added 298,000 jobs year over year from September of '21 to September of '22. So the market as a whole is, has been very, very strong, and so from that standpoint, I would say that we continue to see people move into the area where jobs are plentiful.
What about like, like when people moving like to the smaller communities, coming out of the city, you know, like from Dallas, because from Dallas to Corsicana is really not that far. You know, like from Dallas, because from Dallas to Corsicana is really not that far. So, do you see like a change in people moving? You know, because for a while, people were going like to Waukesha-Hatchee from Dallas. They're working in Dallas for, what, they live in Waukesha-Hatchee. So, do you see people coming out of Dallas moving like this way?
I, I, I think it can be that. I, I definitely would say it's, it may be more related to people's ability to do the hybrid work model. And so, that's where people are going to be able to be more flexible about where they're able to live. And so, from that standpoint, they are moving to other areas that, smaller towns and regions that, that are attractive. So, absolutely.
With, you know, with the growth in like, let's say, like Waukesha-Hatchee, because Dallas is really is, you can only go so far north until they're in Oklahoma. Do you, do you see that Corsicana will be a beneficiary of that growth in the future?
Absolutely. I think long-term, things continue to move this direction. So, the, the metroplex continues to widen. And so, as that happens, I, I believe residents will continue to move south and as developments that were more central to the DFW area move a little bit further south, then those things that they can reach will, will come to areas like Corsicana. So, absolutely, I do believe that long-term that, that will be the case. And, and we see that in overall population trends. So, with what you've got, we would anticipate that those population trends would continue. And when you have businesses that are moving into this area, as you do with Riot Blockchain, those kind of things will potentially facilitate additional attention to the, to the region and potentially create additional job growth and, and population growth.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
It's a lot to digest, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move into the public hearing. And we're going to hear from interested parties regarding the possible designation of the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone as contemplated by the tax value limitation application submitted by the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC. As required by chapter three-twelve of the Texas Tax Code, the district posted notice of this hearing in the newspaper and notified the appropriate taxing authorities of hearing within the designated timelines. The purpose of this hearing is to allow any interested party to present an argument for or against the designation of the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone. The legal description and location of the proposed reinvestment zone as published in the newspaper and posted on the district's websites are available at the back of the room. Before getting started, I would like to present a few guidelines. First, I would ask attendees and board members to keep in mind that the purpose of this hearing is for the board to hear from the community before making a decision regarding the designation of a reinvestment zone. I will ask Superintendent Dr. Frost and our legal counsel, Mr. Todd Clark, to take note of the concerns voiced by community members and to address them throughout tonight's meeting to the extent possible. Next, keep in mind that while the board will be listening closely to public comments, we will not answer questions directly or engage in conversation during the hearing. We will have time to consider and discuss matters more fully later in the meeting when we take up action items on that matter. Finally, we are all here to do what is best for our district and our students. With that in mind, please be respectful in your comments and address them to the board. At this time, are there any speakers who wish to present an argument for or against the designation of the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone? Finally, we are all here to do what is best for our district and our students. With that in mind, please be respectful in your comments and address them to the board. At this time, are there any speakers who wish to present an argument for or against the designation of the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone? All right. Nobody? All right. No comment. All, all interested parties have had an opportunity to speak for or against the designation of the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone, and we, we are ready to move on to our next agenda item. Public hearing, item seven C. At this time, we will begin our public hearing regarding the possible creation of the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC reinvestment zone as contemplated by the tax value limitation application submitted by the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC. As required by chapter three-twelve of the Texas Tax Code, the district posted notice of this hearing in the newspaper and notified the appropriate taxing authorities of the hearing within the designated timelines. The purpose of this hearing is to allow any interested party to present an argument for or against the designation of the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC reinvestment zone. The legal description and location of the proposed reinvestment zone as published in the newspaper and posted on the district's websites are available at the back of the room. The same guidelines as I described before the first public hearing still apply. At this time, are there any speakers who wish to present an argument for or against the designation of the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC reinvestment zone? All right. Thank you for your concerns. All interested parties have had an opportunity to speak for or against the designation of the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC reinvestment zone, and we are ready to move on to our next agenda item.
Dr. Brown. That.
Todd Clark from the Las Vegas Law Firm. You have posted on your agenda an opportunity to go into closed session if you want to, but if you would just like me to give an overview out here, I can do that too.
Just keep them.
Anybody want to go in close?
Just roll them through.
All right. At this time, we will begin agenda item seven D. Consider and take possible action to adopt criteria and guidelines for creating a reinvestment zone within geographic boundaries of Corsicana ISD. All the agenda for this item specifies one project, and item seven F pertains to another. Any criteria and guidelines would apply to any approved reinvestment zone. Dr. Frost, you may begin your presentation.
As you know, the district received an application for tax value limitation for Tawakana Creek Solar LLC seeking a play, to place a cap on its value for maintenance and operations tax purposes in exchange for bringing additional taxable improvements and jobs to Corsicana ISD. Before any entity is eligible for a tax value limitation, it must be located within a reinvestment zone created under chapter three-twelve of the Texas Tax Code. A reinvestment zone is an area subject to tax benefits due to its ability to attract major investment in the district. In most cases, reinvestment zones are created by the county in connection with the tax abatement. However, as a taxing entity, Corsicana ISD has the ability to create a limited-purpose reinvestment zone connected to pending tax value limitation application. Before the district can create a limited-purpose reinvestment zone, it must adopt criteria and guidelines that will govern the district's consideration and adoption of reinvestment zones moving forward. The draft criteria and guidelines you have in front of you, if adopted, will allow the district to move forward with the designation of a limited-purpose reinvestment zone for Tawakana Creek LLC and any future reinvestment zone, zones deemed appropriate or necessary. The, the criteria and guidelines were prepared by our district's legal counsel, Ms. Kelly Caltoller, with Walsh Gallegos Firm tonight. Ms. Caltoller's law partner, Todd Clark, is also a shareholder in the firm, is, is available to answer questions if needed. Do you, do you want to hear a criteria, the criteria from Mr. Clark? Okay. Mr. Clark, would you provide an overview for the board, please?
Certainly. Thank you. Dr. Frost, Dr. Brown, trustees, appreciate you having me here tonight to give you this overview. As your superintendent just explained, the process by which you can even extend the opportunity for a value limitation agreement, which is also on your agenda tonight, stems from the creation of a reinvestment zone. What you have on your agenda, and you've had in your board book as well, is the criterion guidelines that you have to approve before you can designate a specific zone as an economic redevelopment zone. So, the guidelines themselves are only about three pages long. Essentially, they say that pursuant to Texas Tax Code three-twelve, you're able to designate, you have the authority to designate a reinvestment zone. It explains that the purpose of that is to promote economic growth, and the criteria set out in the document go through things like job creation, wages and benefits to be paid to new employees, anticipated increase in taxable values within the district's jurisdiction, student population growth potential, and other ways to attract new business to the area. The guidelines just explain that you'll give written notice, as you have already done to the public, that you may create such a reinvestment zone, and that you will provide all the taxing entities within the district written notice that you are considering creating a reinvestment zone like this, and that has happened as well. So, those things have to happen seven days in advance of tonight, and they have. And so, the guidelines just say that's the basis for, and the criteria you will apply in considering any other reinvestment zone tonight or for the next two years. And also, it's the, that reinvestment zone set of guidelines applies for any tax limitation, value limitation agreements you might enter for any industry that's located in that reinvestment zone. So, that's the overview on the criterion guidelines themselves. After this item, you'll then consider if you want to actually create a specific reinvestment zone for the Tawakana Solar, Tawakana Creek Solar LLC project. So, while I thought that we might have an action item to create a specific reinvestment zone for that applicant as well, since the Controller's Office hasn't yet approved or certified that project, I'm just going to ask that if you approve these criterion guidelines and then you approve the Tawakana Creek reinvestment zone itself, that you also have some additional motion on that one remaining item, just to say, hey, these are the guidelines that will apply in the event that Pitsky Ridge comes back to us for approval at a later time. It's kind of a belt-and-suspenders approach. Really, if you adopt these criterion guidelines, they'll apply for the next two years for any investment opportunity that comes along. But I just wanted to make that clear, why that's set out in your agenda that way. Any questions? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion then.
A move that we adopt a criteria and guidelines as presented and to authorize the board president or his designee to execute same on behalf of the board.
Second.
Oh, a motion and a second. To adopt the criteria and guidelines as presented and authorize the board president or, or his designee to execute same on behalf of the board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. All right. We are now ready to take up item seven E on our agenda for tonight, which is consideration and possible action to adopt resolution creating Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone. All right. Are there any motions or questions?
Mr. President, I move to designate the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone by way of, of the resolution as presented. I further move to authorize the board, the board president or his designee to execute the resolution on behalf of the board that a complete copy of the resolution be included in the official minutes for this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All right. To designate the Tawakana Creek Solar LLC reinvestment zone by way of the resolution as presented, I further move to authorize the board president or his designee to execute the resolution on behalf of the board, and then a complete copy of the resolution be included in the official minutes of this meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. All right. We have already approved criteria and guidelines for the adoption of the reinvestment zone. Do I have a motion to apply the, these criteria and guidelines regarding the application filed by the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC?
A move that we apply the adopted criteria and guidelines to our consideration of the application of Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, that we apply the adopted criteria and guidelines to our consideration of the application of Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Ayes have it. And we will apply the adopted criteria and guidelines to our conversation of the Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC. There is no action item for consideration of designating a reinvestment zone and act, and action to adopt a resolution creating Pitsky Ridge Solar LLC reinvestment zone, but we may take up a future meeting and will consider any comments from tonight's public We will now go into closed session for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel regarding the proposed, we don't have to do that. We're not going into closed session. All right, sorry.
Unless you want, anybody?
All right, sorry. It's a very long script, okay? All right. We are, this is, this is a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the possible approval of the application and agreement for a value limitation agreement with, with Tawakana Creek Solar LLC. The purpose of this hearing is to allow any interested party to offer comments or present their views regarding the possible approval of the application of or proposed agreement with Tawakana Creek Solar LLC. At this time, are there any speakers who wish to comment on or present an argument for or against the application of and proposed agreement with Tawakana Creek Solar LLC? All interested parties have had an opportunity to speak for or against the application of and proposed agreement with Tawakana Creek Solar LLC, and we are ready to move on to our next agenda item. The next item to consider is seven H and take possible action to make findings associated with the application and proposed agreements for tax value limitation with Tawakana Creek Solar LLC as required by the Texas Tax Code, chapter three thirteen. Board members, you have a copy of the proposed findings in your packets and have had a chance to review. Dr. Frost, will you please read the proposed findings aloud for our audience?
I would love to. Findings as to each of the criteria enlisted in Texas Tax Code, section three-one-three-point-oh-two-five and Texas Administrative Code, title thirty-four, section nine-point-one-oh-five-four. Based on the representation of, of applicants set out in the application attached as exhibit A, the comp trailer's approval and economic impact analysis attached as exhibit B, the district consultant's independent economic impact analysis attached as, as exhibit C, and the franchise tax account status attached as exhibit E, the board of trustees finds number one, that the comp trailer recommends approval of the application. Number two, that there is a strong and positive relationship between the applicant's industry and the types of qualifying jobs to be created by the applicant and the long-term economic growth plans of the state. Number three, that based on the representations in the application, the applicant could relocate or relocate the project to another state or another region of this state. Number four, that the project will result in revenue gains by the school district and that the economic effects on the local and regional tax base are that the tax base will increase as a result of the project and additional employment. Number five, that there exists a small but undetermined possibility that the project could have an impact on enrollment from families that might temporarily relocate during the construction phase, but that any impact during the operation phase can be absorbed by current facilities. Number six, that the projected market value of the qualified property of the applicant as determined by the comp trailer is four-hundred-sixteen-million-five-hundred-thousand dollars. That's, number seven, that the proposed limitation on appraised value for the qualified property of the applicant is thirty million dollars. Number eight, that the projected dollar amount of district maintenance and operations taxes that would be imposed on the qualified property for each, for each year of the agreement if the property does not receive a limitation on appraised value is twenty-nine-million-three-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-two-hundred-forty-seven dollars as shown in exhibit B, attachment A, table three. Number nine, that the projected dollar amount of the taxes would be imposed on the qualified property for each tax year of the agreement if the property receives a limitation on appraised value is seven-million-four-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty dollars as shown on exhibit B, attachment A, table four. That the total amount of taxes projected to be lost or gained by the district over the life of the agreement computed by subtracting the projected taxes if the property receives a tax limitation from the projected taxes. If the property does not receive a tax limitation, is twenty-one-million-eight-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-six dollars as shown on exhibit B, attachment A, table four. Number eleven, the applicant is eligible for the limitation on the appraised value of the applicant's qualified property. Applicant's qualified property is eligible for a limitation on appraised value under Texas Tax Code, section three-one-three- Texas Tax Code Section 313.024 as a renewable energy electric generation project. Number 12, the project proposed by the applicant is reasonably likely to generate tax revenue in an amount sufficient to offset the school district maintenance and operations and, I'm sorry, maintenance and operations ad valorem tax revenue lost as a result of the agreement before the 25th anniversary of the beginning of the limitation period. Thirteen, the limitation of appraised value is a determining factor in the applicant's decision to invest capital and construct the project in this state. Number 14, the job creation requirement of 10 new jobs exceeds the industry standard for the number of employees reasonably necessary for the operation of the project described in the application. Pursuant to Texas Tax Code 313.025 F1, the board waives a new job creation requirement in Tax Code Section 313.051B. Fifteen, applicant will create two new qualifying jobs, and applicant has confirmed that such jobs will meet the requirements of Texas Tax Code Section 313.0213. Sixteen, that the project will be located within an area designated as a reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Tax Code, Chapter 312. Seventeen, the, the information in the application submitted by the applicant is true and correct. Eighteen, the proposed agreement for limitation on appraised value of property for school district maintenance and operations taxes agreement attached heretofore as Exhibit D meets all the requirements set out in Texas Tax Code 31, Section 313.027, including adequate and appropriate revenue protection provisions for the district. Number 19, the proposed agreement is in the form of the template Texas Economic Development Act Agreement adopted by the comp trailer as of October 2020, and the comp trailer has verified that the agreement complies with the provisions of Chapter 313 of the Texas Tax Code and 34 Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 9, so Chapter F. Twenty, considering the purpose and effect of the law and the terms of the agreement, granting the application and entering the agreement are in the best interest of the district and the state. Twenty-one, the applicant, Tewauna Creek Solar LLC, Texas taxpayer ID number 32080854170 is an entity subject to Chapter 21 Texas Tax Code and certified to be in good standing with the Texas Comp Trailer Republic Accounts. A copy of the comp trailer's franchise tax account status is attached as Exhibit E. Twenty-two, there are no conflicts of interest on the board at the time of its consideration on the agreement. Twenty-three, and final one, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that sufficient written notice of the date, time, place, and subject of the meeting of the board of trustees at which these findings were made was posted at a place convenient and readily accessible at all times to the general public for the time required by law preceding this meeting as required by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, and that this meeting has been open to the public as required by law at all times during which these findings were made and the subject matter thereof has been discussed, considered, and formally acted upon. The board of trustees further ratifies, approves, and confirms such written notice in posting thereof. That is all. Trustees, please take special note of finding number 22 regarding conflict of interest. Any trustee with a conflict or potential conflict of interest should identify the conflict at this time. Any such trustee should abstain from any vote on the findings or agreement.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
I move to adopt the findings on the tax value limitation application submitted by Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented and to authorize the board president or his designee to execute the findings on behalf of the board. I further move we include a complete copy of the findings in the final minutes for this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the findings of the tax value limitation application submitted by Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented to and authorized the board president or his designee to execute the findings on behalf of the board. I further move we include a complete, a copy of the findings in the final minutes of this meeting. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Ayes have it. And we will adopt the findings on the tax value limitations and that submit, an application submitted by Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented to and authorized board president or his designee to execute the findings on behalf of the board, and we will include a complete copy of the findings in the final minutes. Having approved the findings, we will now move to Item 7I and consider and take possible action to approve the tax value limitation agreement with Tewauna Creek Solar LLC. Does a representative from Tewauna Creek Solar LLC wish to speak at this time?
Good afternoon, or evening, I'll say. My name is Gary Peters. I'm a consultant representing solar proponent in the development of this project. Behind me, I've got Tom McElwain, who's the actual developer of the project of Tewauna Creek Solar. Just real quick, want to give you guys an update as well as kind of talk about the project and then Tom can, specific project questions or company questions you have for him. But it's a specific to Corsicana ISD. It's 235 megawatts of solar PV generation, and then there's 325 megawatts of batteries that's projected to be here in Corsicana ISD. Overall, that's 53% of the project. The other 47% of the project is south and where the ISD. On October 17th, they approved the findings in the 313 agreement with Tewauna Creek Solar. So this kind of finalizes our process with, with both of the school districts, and then we'll start focusing our efforts on, on the border counties as we progress the development further. Do you have any questions for me? If not, I'll let Tom answer some questions if you have any for him. Thank you.
Thank you all for having us again this evening. My name is Tom. This is Gary. I can just give a brief update on how the project is going so far. So since we were last here, things are still progressing pretty well. We've just finished some geotechnical surveys on the property. We're additionally working with the utility and have a meeting with them with Encore in January to review the transmission and the point of interconnection into the grid out there. So I would say we're still in sort of an early to mid-stage of the development of the project, still at least probably a year at the quickest from starting any construction. But overall, things are progressing well. We haven't had any roadblocks or, or major issues to deal with to date. So appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Have any question? Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the proposed tax limitation with Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented and to authorize the board president or his designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. To approve the proposed tax limitations with Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented and to authorize the board president or his designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the board. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and we will have approved the proposed tax limitation with Tewauna Creek Solar LLC as presented and to authorize the board president or his designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the board. All right. Now, we're moving into consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and we've approved the consent agenda. We will now go into closed session as permitted by Texas Governance Code 551.01.